...the permit application. Input is used to determine what additional information the applicant may be required to provide, what issues may need to be addressed by the applicant, and ultimately to inform the permit decision that I will make as the Director of this agency. Thank you again for being here. So let's talk about what the removal-fill permitting process is. To protect Oregon's waters, projects that propose removing or filling material in water and wetlands are required to obtain a removal-fill permit from DSL. Anyone who does that, doesn't matter if it's Jordan Cove or the farmer down the street, anyone who does that kind of work needs to come to our agency for a permit. Granted, this one is a big one. The removal Jordan Cove Energy Project is proposing removal-fill... I'm not sure. Okay. This is proposing removal-fill activities, and of course they need a permit. Our permit is one of multiple approvals, so they need to go to other agencies for other permits that affect other parts of the project. There are authorizations... Gotcha. There are authorizations and permits that are required from other Oregon governments and the agencies, so we're not the only place that they're coming to. So know that there's many, many opportunities for you to have input. The removal-fill permit focuses specifically on the potential impacts of removing and...
Sometimes it has to do with where you are in the room.
I'm not moving. Okay, I'll come forward. Thank you for that suggestion. The removal-fill permit focuses specifically on the potential impacts of removing and filling materials in waters and wetlands. The public review and comment period is an opportunity for you all to evaluate and provide input on the project's effects, its available alternatives, and whether proposed mitigation doing something to make it better or different is sufficient to offset anticipated effects. That's your job to help us note that information. This might be the magic spot.
Well, let me put some tape there for you then.
The proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project is also required to obtain authorizations from this agency, DSL, Department of State Lands, for a variety of project components such as easements for bridges, river crossings, tight lines, stormwater outflows, and others, crossings on state-owned land, leasing and registration for WRF certificates and data buoys, authorizations and easements for mitigation sites, and a stand-and-gravel license for the proposed access channel. So you see, they have a lot of issues before this agency. Comment opportunities for each of these elements that I just talked about vary, and they have not yet occurred. This is our first foray into their application process. Please visit our table in the back to learn more, and I'll introduce my folks as we get to the end. The purpose of the hearing is to provide a safe, productive forum for you to comment on this removal-fill application. We hope to hear from as many of you as we can by 8:00 PM, but we are going to stop at 8:00 PM. I can't go beyond 8:00 PM, and neither can my staff. It's been a long day, so we have set 8:00 PM as our time of thing. You may be able to leave written comments or hear this evening, or submit them online. So we need to have you all cooperate if we're going to do this in a good way. So around the room, you'll see we've posted the ground rules. I'm going to go over them and make sure you all agree, or at least understand them. Sign up to speak, and that's back at table. Sign-up sheets are at the table. Be respectful of each other and my staff. Silence your cellphones. It's a good time to make sure you're all turned off or on mute, because that's just... if you have a young person especially, or a nervous person... I used to be in the legislature. I was a state senator, and people would come up and testify, and some of my cellphone would go off, and they would just lose all confidence in their testimony. So please, turn it off. Signs, banners, placards, flags are not allowed in the hearing room. I see T-shirts. I'm not telling you, you can't wear a T-shirt, but I don't want to see anyone unfurling a flag, or a sign, or anything like that, because then we're going to ask you to take it outside. Okay? We're going to ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, because we can't hear from all of you if we have more time than that. Be a respectful audience member. So if you agree with comments and you're really excited and you want to clap, go clap. Thumbs up. Do... Have your hands... I can't lift my hands right now, but please, I don't want to hear you clap. I don't want to hear you boo. That is just not respectful, and we'll have to close the hearing if we start hearing that kind of behavior. We just won't get very far if you do that, so I'm just going to ask you to be really nice about that tonight. And do not engage in any intimidating or disruptive behavior. There's people here you are going to disagree with, but we don't mean anybody shoving anybody or swearing at somebody. We just all need to understand we have different opinions, and we're here to express them. I want you to be sure that we have everyone given the opportunity to speak. So if our room is at capacity, and we are not at the moment, but my staff will tell me if we are, if we are at capacity and you have already spoken, we're going to have to ask you to leave so that others may enter the room. We don't have that problem now, but if it arises, I'll let you know. Okay, so we have comments received. However you give us your comments, they have equal weight. So if you're here today, testifying in front of me, if you send me an email, if you go over to that table where Bill Ryan is and leave written comments, it's the same weight. It doesn't matter. So that's why we can get through this hearing very respectfully. That's going to be awesome, because I'm going to listen to it all. All right, so does everyone understand those rules? If there's anyone in this room who doesn't understand those rules, please raise your hand, and I'll try to clarify. All right, so I'm going to assume you all know. Okay, so on the sign-up sheet, we ask people older than 65 and people with disabilities to indicate if they wish to comment early in the evening. That's one advantage to being an old person like me. So I'm only 62, but I'm getting there. So the thing is, the people my age, we like to go to bed early. I went to bed last night at 7:30. I can't believe that. So no more late nights. But anyway, we want to give respect to our elders. It's important to do that. So we've got them, if they want to talk early, they've been given a priority number to do so. I will also call people forward in the order they signed up. We have five people that we're going to call up at any one time that will come up to this chair, and these chairs, and then two people will come over here. So we're actually going to call seven... Excuse me, seven. Two here and five here. One person will testify, and then... Oh, thank you. One person will testify, and one person will wait. So we're going to keep this moving along. Please do not miss your turn. If you are called and you're not here, I'm sorry that you can't sign up again. We can't wait for you. You see, this room is filled to capacity. All right. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Ann here will tell you when you have one minute remaining, and she... With a sign. There you go. It's upside down, but we'll get that figured out. And then when you have completed your time, she will hold up the times up, and you must stop. Please, in order to be fair and respectful, we are timing your comments, and Ann is doing that for you. All testimony that we are taking tonight will be recorded and transcribed. Now, I was a court reporter for 25 years, and I listened to people talk, and I used to transcribe, and I'm not doing this one. I have no interest in transcribing all this, and my machine's in the attic, but we are having a professional transcribe all these comments, and then they'll be up on our website so you can see those. All right, so if you change your mind at some point and you don't want to testify, let the table, the sign-up table, know so we can cross your name off the list. If you do it in writing, you can submit your comments by email, mail, or fax. Also, I've got... This is a written comment form that you can write on, and Bill Ryan over there, hang your head up in the... Yay, wave! Yes, that's Bill. He's my... Our deputy director, one of our deputy directors at DSL. He'll take your written comments. He will also take one of these. The screen card here is if questions come up that my staff has not been able to answer for you tonight, or you just have a question and you don't know who to ask or how to ask it, write it on this card. It'll go to Bill, and we'll have our technical staff answer the question, and then they will be up on our website, so you will be able to see all the questions and all the answers. Okay. So, because we don't have time for formal questioning in this period, which is why we're doing that. We also have representatives here from Jordan Cove who are here to answer your questions about the project, and they are on a back table in the back room. Can you guys wave your hands from Jordan Cove? There's a few hands. So if you have questions about the project that are not technical questions from my staff, ask them. That's why they're here. They're not here because we necessarily support or disapprove of this project. They're just here because it's their application, and they know it best. My technical staff, who's a fantastic team, is in the back right by the door, Bob Lobdell and Eric Metz. They will be able to answer your questions about the permit. And then floating around the room, Malia... Malia Masiba. She's right behind... In the back, and she's with Ally, and Malia is working on... At the sign-up table, and Ally will be running around the room answering all kinds of questions that you might have. We are human. We need breaks, so you may see a step out to take a restroom break or get a drink of water, but we're... Someone is always listening. It's being recorded. So as I mentioned, the restrooms are over in that direction. As is the water fountain. I do want to thank Clamath Community College for allowing us to be here. We are... The department is renting this facility from the college, and our presence here does not indicate that the college supports this project. They are just here to offer us space, and I appreciate that. We also have the services of some of our law enforcement here. Local Clamath County Sheriff and the Oregon State Police are here if anyone needs anything. Again, I want to remind you, please do not disrupt the hearing with any kind of demonstration, or we will close it. I have grandchildren that are three and five, and they get a timeout when they do something bad. Here it's a big timeout. We will just close the hearing, and I don't want to do that. So I, at this time, want to see if there's any elected officials or any tribal chairs or tribal chiefs in the room that could come forward first. Chair Gentry, do you want to have a seat in the front here? Any other elected officials? Okay. Some new people I haven't met yet.
I'll get their names.
Okay. All right. Gary? Okay, so my tribal folks and my elected folks here, the reps, we're going to have you... All right. We're going to have you testify first. I've just been alerted that we are at room capacity now, so as you testify, I know you might want to wait and hear your friends talk, but I'm going to have to ask if you would please leave so that we can have others come into the room. So right now, we're going to get underway. I'm officially going to open the hearing. Ann, is the machine running?
Yes, the machine's been running since you started talking.
Oh, great. Okay, so I'm live on in perpetuity. All right, so I'm going to call my first two folks up from the Clamath tribe, and I get both of you at the same time. And I will have each person speaking state their name and where they're from, and what their affiliation is. And with that, I'm going to be quiet. Thank you very much, folks.
Hold on just a minute, gentlemen.
Should I hold the microphone?
No, it should. I'm told we just go this way, and it should pick you up, and then...
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes. You'll give me your name and spell it, please.
My name is Don Gentry. D-O-N-G-E-N-T-R-Y. I'm chairman of the Clamath tribes. I could give you my Clamath name, Ditch Young. Let's... It'd be a little difficult to spell and say. Thank you.
Can we turn it off?
Yeah, that's what I was concerned about. If I can hold the mic, I think that would be better.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's try that. We might have to finagle this a little bit till we get our bearings straight.
Right.
Okay, should I start now?
Yep.
Director Walker?
Okay, let's switch. I'm not sure what's wrong with that one, but maybe that one will work. Mark?
Yes, okay.
Yay!
Director Walker, thank you so much for providing this opportunity. First, I think it's appropriate to welcome you to the homeland of our modoc, our Clamath and our people. I think it's important that you know who we are. We have a lot of our members here represented, as you can see, tribal members and folks in red. I think it's in the short time that I'm allotted here, I wanted to accomplish a couple things indirectly with you. First, to put a face, you know, we're people that we've been placed here by a creator, according to legends and stories, were the first people of the land. We've been here since time immemorial, and with that, you know, our people have lived here forever, and lived and died here, and buried our people here, and we have subsisted on everything that our creator placed here, you know, the fish, the wildlife, the waterfowl. A lot of these associated with the rivers and wetlands that you deal with. So I think it's important for you to understand that part of it. And, you know, the Clamath tribes oppose the project. We've been participating where we can in various permitting processes, and providing substantive comments, and we'll provide some substantive comments also in this permitting process in writing. But I wanted to focus on a couple things. We're concerned about the impacts of the project, the risk of implementing the project and maintaining the project over time, the impacts on water quality. We know there's potential frac out, there's potential problems that can occur, you know, that would affect the concerns that we have. But one of the significant concerns we have is the potential to disturb human remains, you know, where the route is, where it's located. We know that the rivers migrated over time. There's a significant risk of disturbing human remains, which are burial grounds. I mean, if you think of it, it's almost like a cemetery, and we don't know where all these remains are, but they've commonly been disturbed. So that's one of the things that can't be mitigated. When there's an impact, and I participated in reburials on a project, a highway widening project, and it's a significant thing for our people and emotional, so with the short time that I have, I guess I... That's it. But at least I wanted to share that and be prepared for the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
When does the time start?
Just one second. If you want to finish your...
Okay.
And there are what the emails up there. Okay. Do you see your name and spell it for me?
After?
No, first.
My name is Perry Chokto. I'm an at-large member of the Clamath tribes, Tribal Council. This project will not benefit the people of Clamath Falls, the state of Oregon, or the Clamath tribes. It jeopardizes the health of the Clamath and the Rogue River, as just mentioned, two of the 114 planned. It will dig up our ancestors as is planned to dig through known village sites and burial grounds. It will impact migrating eagles as its footprint is under their migratory path, as well as being under the Pacific Flyway, impacting our migratory bee and birds. On an economic basis, Pembina would rather sell the natural gas to the Orient for big bucks than sell residents' natural gas, because they'll make more money. So what does that mean? That means if this project goes through, that gas is going to the Orient. Our bills are going to multiply. I know there's been a lot of propaganda in the news lately, but it is not good for our people. It is not good for the state of Oregon. The state of Oregon needs to stop supporting these projects that do not benefit the state of Oregon. So far as removal and fill, the footprint of this project will, not mine, will unbury the remains of our people and our village sites and impact cultural resources. Cultural resource is a non-renewable resource, and it will be impacted forever. Remember what the Ruby Pipeline looks like. You can see it from space. They go out there and poach and loot to this day. That's what we've got to look forward to for this project. Impacting our waterways is so significant. We cannot support that in any way. One drop of this bentonite slurry lands in any of our waters, anything with a gill dies. These are the facts. And I want to apologize to everybody tonight, because I don't have fancy green hats to hand out, and I don't... To make you see my cause or think my way, I think I'll just appeal to your sense of right and wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Perry. I'll take that. And then if you want to submit that as well...
I will.
Mr. Ryan will take it over to the table.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much for opening our hearing. We will have the next folks, Representative Warner Rushke, and Derek DeGroot, County Commissioner Chair.
Hi, Karen.
Hi, Koby.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Who's going first?
Age before me.
Listen to him.
All right, state your name for the record, and we'll get started. I already told people, but...
Derek DeGroot. Chair of the Clamath County Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
All right. Director, first, I want to thank you for coming to Clamath. I think that you'll find that the Clamath folks are easy to get along with. I anticipate we'll have a nice, easy hearing without a lot of ruckus that you had mentioned earlier. I'm here to let you know the Clamath County Board of Commissioners unanimously voted to support the Jordan Cove Pipeline. This helps Clamath County in a multitude of different ways.
Try that one, sorry. I'll add a couple seconds under your time.
That's all right. Or that one? Okay. It helps Clamath County in a multitude of different ways, not the least of which would be the tax basis that comes to Clamath County. It's estimated that at the low end, it's $6 million a year, with over $1 million of that going to our general fund, and 60% of that going to schools.
Okay.
On top of that, there are thousands of temporary jobs while the project is being built, but a dozen jobs of over $85,000 a year, which in Clamath County, that's about double our median wage. So these jobs will not just impact us for that, but also in a way that multiplies over time. Those jobs will then bring other jobs that would support us. So for us, it's very important that this goes through. We've been living with pipelines in Clamath County for a very long time. The GTN Pipeline's been here for over 60 years, and they've been a great partner for us with absolutely no complications. So pipelines have been a friend of Clamath County for a long time, and we'd like to continue that legacy. So thank you very much for being here.
Sure. Thank you. State your name and spell it, please, and then you can go.
My name is E. Warner Rushke. E. Period. W-E-R-N-E-R. For the record, my name is E. Warner Rushke. I'm a state representative for Oregon's House District 56, which encompasses the parts of Clamath County that will be affected by the Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Pipeline Project. I'm also a resident just outside of Millin, Oregon, the fountainhead for this project. As Commissioner DeGroot has already said, pipelines are not a new phenomenon in Clamath County. My specific comments are concerning the removal-fill permit number 60697-RF for the Jordan Cove Energy Project LP and Pacific Connector Gas Pipeline LP. I believe the applicant has met the requirements for the department to issue this permit, and I ask that the department issue this permit in a timely manner. There are five reasons why I, as state representative, am full support of this project going forward. Time will let me go through all five of them, so I'll pick a few out, and I have further written comments for the record. Number one is safety. The project's design uses proven methods and technologies to safely cross beneath waterways and avoid impacts to aquatic life. Number two is environment. Jordan Cove is going above and beyond the mitigation requirements to restore the Kentucky Golf Course in Coos Bay for increased habitat of Coho salmon. Number three is economy. Commissioner DeGroot already covered that. Number four is synergy. Oregon has marine terminals, LNG storage facilities, and several interstate gas pipelines. This project merely leverages those elements. Number five is community support. I'm not alone in requesting approval of this permit, and you'll hear more from others tonight. These are strong reasons to allow this project to move forward in a timely manner. I thank you for your professionalism, your diligence in evaluating this permit application, and for your time. Welcome to Clamath County.
Thank you.
Thanks, darling.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet both of you.
You as well. Okay, Mayor. Gary?
Zig. Zigzag.
Zigzag. All right, thank you.
I'm here... I'm not a very good speech giver, but I'm here just to show support for the Jordan Cove Project. I am the mayor of the city of Millin, and the city council as well is in total support of this project. We are the hub of gas lines in Clamath County. We've already had two over the last 20 or 30 years. I have lived here 45 years, and I've never seen a problem with any of them. It seems to me like the land after the project is completed looks just like it did the day before the project started. You know what I mean? The way it's... The way the land is put back together after the gas line goes in is just phenomenal to my way of thinking. So my only other comment is, we would love to share in any way we can with this project. We are in total support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time. All right, we are, excuse me, ready to start calling folks forward, and I'm going to call seven up. The first two I call are going to come sit up here, and the other five over here, and you'll be what's called on deck. So Dell Fox, could you come forward, please? And Dell will take one of these seats here. And John Ward, can I get you to take a second seat right here? And then Heather... Heather... Ooh, here with the Clamath County Chamber. I can't read your writing. Heather Trump? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. Come forward. Gary Jackson. Sally Wells. Mike Garrett. Two, three, four, and one more. Taylor Tupper. I think that's five. Okay, great.
Do you have one of these?
I do.
May I have it, please? Oh, how about you use it as your notes, and then you give it to me when you're finished? Does that work for you?
All right. Thank you. So we'll get started, and I will hand it over to you, sir, first, since you're right in front of me.
My name is John Ward. From Clamath Falls. I've been here 50 years, and I'm speaking tonight as Conservation Chair for the Rogue Fly Fishers, who have been very concerned about this impact this project could have on our local fisheries, not to mention its adverse impacts on Indian domain ranchers and others that are maybe not benefited. I don't know, is this still working?
Yes, it's still working.
Okay. The Board of Directors at the January meeting adopted a resolution they will submit in writing to the DSL, and I'll follow up my comments with specific concerns over the stream crossings, both in Clamath County and in Jackson County, where our ranch is located. And... The Board of Directors at the January meeting adopted a resolution they will submit in writing to the DSL, and I'll follow up my comments with specific concerns over the stream crossings, both in Clamath County and in Jackson County where our ranch is located. And I'm trying to make a little clearer. It's adverse impact, I believe, on not only the removal, because many of these are just grid crossings, and some of them don't hold up very well. We get into soil instability, slope instability, and increased sedimentation, which is, impacts the juvenile fish eggs and so on. So I'll try to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to pass the microphone? I'll take your orange, if you don't mind. Dell?
Yes.
Okay. State your name and where you're from.
My name is Dell Fox, D-E-L-F-O-X. I'm from Dairy, Oregon. I'm treasurer for multiple organizations, Clamath County Republican Superior Committee, as well as most of our politicians. I do the O R S star work. At any rate, I would like to, Dennis Lynch, become our state senator from District 28, which includes Clamath County, send a letter, which I would just like to quote some of it from him. The director for the Department of State Lands must issue a permit if the director determines that the project described in the application is consistent with the protection, conservation, and best use of water resources of this state as specified in O R S 196600 to 196905, and would not reasonably interfere with paramount policy of this state to preserve the use of its water for navigation, fishing, and public recreation. Additionally, there are nine criteria that DSL must consider determining whether to issue the permit for fill and remove of material from the projected area. The items to review include social, economic, and other public benefit likely to result from the proposed fill removal. Additionally, any economic cost for not completing the proposed must also be considered. So we want you to consider all of those things. Well, I'm sure you have. Additionally, the United States has 2.4 million miles of pipe in the ground, 300,000 miles of transmission lines. If there was a problem with pipelines, we would know it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Next two come forward, please. Heather and, well, whoever's next. Come on. State your name and where you're from for the record.
Heather Trump, the Clamath County Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. And can you spell the last name for us, so we make sure we get it right? D-R-A. Okay. Go ahead.
I am here on behalf of the Clamath County Chamber of Commerce. Our Board of Directors voted unanimously to support this project. We represent over 500 businesses that also support the project for the economic impact that is expected. The expected economic impact to our community is supposed to be equal or more than both the CoGen project and the Ruby Pipeline, which were helpful to a lot of our retail, lodging, housing industries, and for that reason, we support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Sally?
Taylor.
Okay. Hi.
My name is Taylor Tupper. I'm a long, Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R, T-U-P-P-E-R.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And I'd like to say that I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas Pacific Connector Pipeline. This pipeline will destroy Oregon's water resources, the water fishing, recreation, and the future people. We know that the liquid moving through these pipelines is caustic, and we know that it'll cause damage to everything in the future. One of the things about this pipeline, it's a Canadian corporation who wants to ruin our 485 waterways and cannot contaminate our clean air in Oregon. This is crystal clear to myself and my tribe. Furthermore, redirectional drilling under the Clamath River and other major rivers in the state of Oregon is not only dangerous, it is detrimental to the future generations. This project is not consistent with the protection, conservation, or best use of Oregon's waters as described in O R S 1968253E. This is a Canadian export for foreign market that still cannot prove the need. This violates everything we uphold here as a community, the rights of my tribal people, and it will expose and destroy tribal cultural areas if allowed. I live here, I fish here, I raft here, and I kayak here. I drink here. My people will continue to be here. These outsiders have lied across this nation. I am tired of their propaganda. This is the third time that we've had to come and fight a billion-dollar corporation. When will they know that after the last river has been poisoned and the last fish has been caught, that money cannot be used?
Thank you.
And thank you for being such a good audience. I appreciate that. All right. We have a couple more folks.
Do you want to start them off?
Yeah, I am.
Over there? You must be Mary.
Hi, yeah.
And if you could spell it, the reason we're asking you to spell it is so that our transcription company gets it right.
Okay.
Gary Jackson, G-A-C-K-S-O-M.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'd like to thank you folks for being here tonight and giving us the chance for this comment, period. And I'm here to voice my support for the Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Project. I view this project from several different viewpoints. I'm a business representative for the Laborers International Union of North America, L I O N A, which represents many local workers that may be involved in this project. I'm an adjacent landowner to the pipeline, a concerned citizen, and a member of the Cow Creek Indian Tribe, of which approximately 120 miles of this pipeline runs through. They're Aboriginal grounds. This project will employ an estimated 6,000 workers during the construction period, of which about 1,200 of those will be laborers that are represented by L I O N A. Some of those will be travelers, up to 50% of them, but the rest will be local people that live in these communities along the route of the project, and will be trained to do the work, and then be able to use these skills after the completion of this project. With the technologies and designs that are being used in the project, the pipeline will be a safe and well-built project. I live a short distance from one of the major river crossings and have total confidence in the design and craftsmanship involved in the operation. As far as the pipeline going cross-country, I personally feel that the project has mitigated any issues that may have surfaced concerning stream crossings or culturally sensitive areas. I urge the Oregon Department of State Lands to issue the removal-fill permit that the Jordan Cove Energy Project and Pacific Connector are applying for. Our local economy needs this project, and the project should satisfy all the requirements of the permit.
Thank you.
My name is Sally Wells, S-A-L-L-Y-W-E-L-L-S. I've been commenting on this project from the time it was an importing proposal through the time it was an exporting proposal that couldn't identify adequate markets for itself, so was not allowed to go forward. This project is not good for Oregon in any way, and I have been writing to the governor and others with my concerns. I recognize the way that hearings are broken up. It's hard to talk about the overall bigger picture, because you are interested in dirt, and DEQ is interested in air, and so it kind of makes it hard to express that the fact that this is a project that is so poorly, so poor for Oregon and everything we care about in Oregon. And I just feel that it's business as usual. We need to change. This kind of project has gotten us to the problems we have now with the environment, and we need, Oregon touts itself as a clean energy state and moving in that direction. And this goes in the face of everything that Oregon's trying to do to move and change the way we do things to protect this state and this countryside that we love. And I think you can say things like earthquake, and tsunami, and market forces, and any number of things that could cause this project to go bad. And then what are we left with? I also object to having to pay the taxes for the Corps of Engineers, which will have to dredge that beautiful channel over there on the coast for the profits of this billion-dollar company. So I'm opposed to it in very strong terms, and I, Oregon can stop it, and I urge you to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells, where are you from?
Where am I from?
Uh-huh.
Clamath Falls.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that you have testified three times now on this project. It's really important. As you point out, there are several agencies involved, so you all need to be vigilant about the project as it goes forward if you want to stay involved and continue to provide your input. Mr. Garrett is here to testify. I'm going to call up some more folks if you just want to hang tight for a minute. I've got some more folks that I'd like to call up. Janice Miller, John Williams, Joe Spendalini, ooh, I love that name, has a meaning to it. Chuck Wells, are you the other half of Sally? Great. Well, come forward. Since we just heard from Sally, Chuck, why don't you just have a seat right there? And Marle John Drew, did I do that right? That's another beautiful name. Leslie Lowe. And I think that will do it for a little bit. So, Mr. Garrett, we're going to take you next.
My name is Mike Garrett, M-I-K-E-G-A-R-R-E-T-T, and I'm 100% in favor of this project. I'll explain a little bit of what my background was. I was involved in logging for over 40 years. Toward the end there, they were getting ready to put in the Ruby Pipeline. I was about to retire. They hired me because of my background, and so I ran the right-of-way logging on the Ruby from Lakeview to Millin. And I've heard a lot of folks say how unsafe everything is, so I'll just give you a perspective from an operational standpoint. On Oregon, the OSHA code for logging says that you need to have a safety meeting once a month. With that project, we had a safety meeting every morning. It was all documented. That was prior to work. The next day, we had to have everything turned in to the folks when they got to the office so they could forward it on. There were a number, and I do mean a large number, of inspectors, ologists, folks that we dealt with on a daily basis. So I met out at Landjo Valley at 5:00 in the morning. We got all the paperwork done prior to getting started with the daily activities. Now, just to give you a rough idea of how that worked, there were, I hear folks say that there's no concern over the environment. The natural way to go into that area would have been from the Point Ranch, and there at the Point Ranch, you had to cross a drainage that came out of Renner Reservoir. We could not do that because of the red-banded trout. We had to have that meeting that I talked about each day. One day, 30 folks signed in, and what we did was, when they signed up, we had two people on the chainsaw. We were following right away. We had one person in case we lost a tree, and we had also the certified flagger. So that just gives you a rough idea of that portion of the safety, and I appreciate the time to talk, and again, I'm 100% for this.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Mr. Wells, I didn't call you the better half or the worse half. You're just the other half.
The other half.
Here you go. Can you hold the microphone, sir?
Yes.
All right. We heard from Sally, so we'll...
My name is Chuck Wells, or Charles H. Wells, C-H-U-C-K-W-E-L-L-S, and I come from Clamath Falls, and I want to say that we taxpayers and our state and local governments alike cannot afford approval of any part of this project and the liabilities that we create under established law. Ultimately, Chapter 11 bankruptcy forestalls any agreements with the applicant for remediation of damages that are likely to occur. When considering the risks, it would not be economically feasible over the prospective life of the project to the lands and waterways constituting southern Oregon and to the state overall. International markets will change yet again, negatively affecting the viability of projected throughput of gas, and hence the realization of tax revenue. This risk is further emphasized by the random moment of earthquake and tsunami effects on Coos Bay and pipeline areas to lives and property and to our resource environment. Restoration costs to water courses and atmospheric effects on the environment would exceed our ability to fully remove the damaged infrastructure and to repair the land and its waterways. Initial and continual dredging by the Corps of Engineers at public expense to create and maintain, at best, a fair-weather tanker channel, which would severely disrupt the existing marine economy's access to the sea and severely damage currently restored environmental habitats of endangered species. To whom do the eminent domain parcels revert when either the application is denied or later bankruptcy occurs? Ultimately, our economy is a wholly owned subsidiary of our natural world, not the other way around. Let us invest in our natural world wisely.
Perfect. I have one question for you.
Yes?
You mentioned Chapter 11. I was a court reporter in bankruptcy court for 25 years, so I know about Chapter 11. Is Pembina in Chapter 11, or is this something you're concerned about?
No, I said, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that they might go declare that should a major event occur, and they would not have to then foot the bill.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that for me. All right. We're going to have a couple of folks move forward, and I'm going to call up some more. The two on the end here, just come fill in the slots, please. Let me see. Laura Spendalini, you must be the other half. Come on up.
She's the better half.
I'm not going to get in the middle of that. I've been married 42 years, and I'm not going to argue that one. Brian Nicholson. And I can fit one more priority person in. Okay. We'll go back to the regular list. Sammy Goodwin. All right. I'm going to get started here. How about you?
Certainly.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate you holding this hearing here. I know the roads weren't too friendly for you to get here. My name is Joe Spendalini. It's J-O-E-S-P-E-M-D-O-L-I-N-I. I serve on the Executive Board of the Clamath County Chamber of Commerce. I also serve as the Chairman of the Government Affairs Committee. And I'm here this evening to ask that you approve the application for the Jordan Cove Pipeline Pacific Connector Project. I'm going to just reinforce a lot of the things that you already heard. The number of jobs that it's going to generate, the number of positions that our local individuals, local craftsmen are going to be able to fill. They can actually enter the workforce as an apprentice and stay on the single project, this one project, all the way through to becoming a journeyman. I think that's incredibly important. The economic impact, as Heather Trump touched on, is going to be felt throughout the entire county. We saw it with the CoGen, we saw it with the Ruby Pipeline. The economic impact was felt with all of our merchants. The economic impact was felt with all of our merchants. It was felt with our hoteliers, our restaurateurs, gas stations. So the other... And I think the final thing, which I believe is equally important, the property tax dollars that Pembina is going to pay with this pipeline. It's going to add about $6, $6.5 million in property taxes to all of the many different taxing districts that the pipeline's going to cross, including, as you heard Commissioner DeGroot mention, over $1 million into the county's general fund. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sir?
Excuse me.
Sir, did you have more questions?
One.
May I have a please? This room. Thank you, sir.
Uh-oh.
Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to testify here tonight. It's a privilege to live in a democracy where everyone has a voice. My name is John Paul Williams. I live in Rock Creek, Oregon. I'm here as a representative of a group called World Without Coal. I know there's a lot of people here tonight, so I'm just going to comment very briefly. I'm supportive about how the Kentucky aspect of the project could expand an existing wetland from 33 degraded acres to over 140 enhanced acres of greater value as wildlife habitat. But what I want to know is how did the company and the agency settle on 140 acres as the amount of new wetlands that will result? And is that an estimate or is that a promise that the agency will enforce? Thank you.
Thank you. Eric and Bob, if you heard that, can you make that a question that we can answer?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, can I have the next two folks? And then I'm going to call up two more. Dean Walczak and Benjamin Guzman.
Do you have one? She does. Can you do that?
I can't imagine sitting where you are. Especially for the amount of time you're going to have to do this.
That's why we're quitting at 8:00.
Yes, I appreciate that. My name is Leslie Lowe. I have L-E-S-L-I-E-L-O-W-E. I have been living in this county for over 40 years. I'm currently President of the League of Women Voters of Clamath County, a grassroots, nonpartisan political organization. Our chapter opposes the Jordan Cove Energy Project and urges the Oregon Department of State Lands to deny their application for removal fill permit. Our members have studied JSEPs DSL permit application and have grave concerns regarding the insufficient information of the engineering processes that will be used for each water body crossing. We are aware that every water body crossing is different, and each requires a detailed engineering description for DSL to make an informed decision on whether to grant or deny the permit. JSEPs application has not provided these needed details. The League of Women Voters of Clamath County also has great concerns whether the Oregon DSL will have the staffing needed to carry out the oversight that will be required for a project of this magnitude. Each water body crossing, over 500 of them, requires by law diligent oversight for any possible harm to our public waters. A promise of best practices from JSEPs is not enough to protect what little water we have in Southern Oregon. The League of Women Voters of Clamath County respectfully asks the Oregon Department of State Lands to deny the Jordan Cove Energy Removal Fail Permit Application. And further, I would like to share with you a list of pipeline accidents from Wikipedia. I know that's not the greatest resource in the world. But when I checked on pipeline accidents, I was shocked to find out how many accidents have occurred around the world and more specifically, how many have occurred around the United States. And specifically, four out of five of many of those accidents were not reported by the company but by residents of the area. And so I'm very concerned about their ability to manage that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowe. We'll take those. Do I hold up my hand? As close as you want.
My name is Marle Jean-Dreaux. And I've done some research over the last few months. Of course, it has already... This project has been denied twice by FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and one third time. Obviously, it's a volatile gas line passing under fragile fault lines. We have the Oregon State Geologist Brad Ady, Director of the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, said that the analysis done by the project, project analysis, was misleading and also was inadequate. They said that there, in that case, that there were no faults that could produce earthquakes except in Clamath Falls, by the way, that's us. They admitted that. And it notes that the state has met faults in the Bay Area. So definitely, the fault lines are a definite problem. And we had the earthquake here 20 years ago. And articles from the Herald News says that it went... It was started in Clamath and was spelled clear to Coos Bay. And Coos Bay is where they're going to be liquefying it, which is extremely volatile. The pressurized gas line, when they do situations where it's comparing the gas lines we have here compared to this 36-inch highly pressurized gas line, it's really a different thing. And getting back to just locally, Lakewood's 2017 article by George Gregory, the manager at the Lakewoods, pipelines could remove and transfer up to 4 million gallons of water from the lake, which he believes could damage roads to camp runs due to multiple water trucks. They want to pull 12 acre-feet of water out of the lake. Originally, they proposed building a pipeline to pull water out of the lake. It would take 1,000, 4,000-gallon tanker trucks to go. So next time you see this pastoral advertising on TV with couples having a picnic by the river, think of how they're covered with dust with 1,000 trucks going past. What is the ton of the things that I can't talk now?
Okay. All right. Just a note of caution that when you are speaking, please try to direct your comments not only into this microphone but this really outer-space-looking one here. Because this one is going into our computer for the transcriber to transcribe. And having been a corporate reporter and transcribed for 25 years, I got to tell you, if you can't understand or can't hear it, it's really hard. So we need you to keep doing that. You guys are doing fabulous. I'm really appreciating listening to your comments. So we're going to have some more folks come forward, the next two in line. And then I'm going to call up two, three more. Ralph Pina. January Bill. And Ron Crete. If you want to come forward on the side here and fill these chairs, that'd be great. And ma'am, I'll have you go first.
I'm Laura Spendolini. I do live here in Clamath Falls. I only want to say I support the Jordan Cove Project. I know there's been a pipeline here through our area since 1961. And I don't think it's experienced any of the problems that the people that have an opposite opinion of me have had. It's been here since '61, so that's over 50 years. And I hope that the people that disagree with me, that have a totally opposite opinion, still respect each... That we all respect each other for a difference of opinion without being disrespectful to each other. And I'm really happy how the hearing's going tonight. And I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. As have I. This has been a great experience. So, sir, you're next.
My name is Brian Nicholson. I'm sort of a... Just a resident of Clamath Falls, about 30 miles west of Clamath Falls, but it's still considered Clamath Falls. It's in a community in the Cascades. And we're a quarter mile from the proposed pipeline. And we've had the people living there, full-time residents, have concerns that the pipeline... We've talked to Jordan Cove, and they said they were going to come out and discuss the thing. We have one very deep well that is of concern that there could be contamination if there's a problem, you know, with the pipeline. And the whole community uses the proposed pipeline for recreation use. And I don't know if anybody here lives near or by the proposed pipeline. You know, it's scary. And we use it for recreation, and the destruction of the forest west of Clamath Falls is unbelievable. It's old forest that they're going to just tear through. They got to use pesticides or monitor it. And I would just like to let everyone know as an individual that, you know, we're concerned. And I know I'm all for progress and jobs, but it's short-lived. Jordan Cove, they're great, I'm sorry to say. They'll lie to everyone, and they'll pay anyone to keep this project going. They're a big corporation. And so the community of Lakewoods Village, Lakewoods Village is opposed... Majority of us are opposed to the project. And we're concerned about the safety of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the next two folks? And the others can move down. And I'll call forward two more. Daniel Lad and Zach Grekstee, I think.
Sir? Ah, ma'am. Hello?
My name is Sammy Goodwin. I'm from Wyegaga, California. Just a hopscap and a jump from here. But my main priority is that I'm a Clamath River... I'm a Clamath River family. So I'm affected by this as well. So yes, I'm opposed to this pipeline or to this... What would I call something that's, you know, from the heart that would almost kill, you know, kill my people further down the road? So my livelihood is salmon. I'm the salmon people. I come from the salmon. My people eat salmon. We eat salmon on a daily if it's available. And it's not always readily available because water contamination, because of water regulations, because of water issues that the Creator never put for us here. But He's given us the tools to fight against it. He's given us the intelligence to come together as one. As a Clamath River resident, as a Clamath River family, I'm here to stand for my salmon and I'm here to stand for my water and say that water is life, water is pure, water is love, water is what we are made of at least 70%. Water means so much more than oil, money, greed. I'm very passionate about my indigenous and my heritage. I'm very passionate about where I came from. I came from the earth. But I'm also very upset by the way people have made our world turn out to be upside down and ugly because that's not who we are as people. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. If you'd like to go ahead and call my name. Okay. Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Can you state your names?
My name is Dean Walczak. D-E-A-N-W-A-L-C-H-A-K. I'm a resident of Clamath Falls.
Wait, wait, wait. W-A-L... What?
W-A-L-C-H-A-K. Although I'm a resident of Clamath Falls, I don't represent anybody except myself and all the community of concerned and caring, logical-thinking citizens that are opposed to the Jordan Cove Pipeline. I urge the DSL to reject the approval permit for the Jordan Cove Pipeline on the basis of scientific factual evidence and historical events. It doesn't take a scientist to realize that we live in an earthquake zone, that the Wanda Faca Fault off the coast of Oregon is overdue for a giant subduction earthquake of major magnitude, which could affect areas inland as far as 200 miles. While it might cause a major tsunami on the coast inland, the effects could be felt just as well up to a couple hundred miles. We know as citizens, we live in an earthquake zone, there are many multiple active fault lines in the area. Also, this is not the only threat. Leakage or catastrophic failure of the pipeline could affect the atmosphere and our health. Also, the degradation of the soils, soil erosion can affect our streams, which are very fragile, as you've seen by the passionate discourse of the native peoples. The fish are very affected by any water disturbance, by any soil that goes into the water. The fish and the first peoples were here first, the cattle and the other peoples came later. I think you should consider the evidence, especially the fact that the permit has been rejected twice. This is the third hearing. Look at the evidence and the risks, and I appreciate your time. Reject the permit.
All right. I have two more folks. And can you scoot down? And I'll call up three more. Allison Andrews. Robert Kingsit. Matthew Jensen. And I apologize if I get your name pronounced wrong.
I didn't get one. They didn't give me one either.
Here you go.
My name is Janice Miller. And I'm a Clamath travel member. I've worked on two of the gas pipelines that have gone through. This is extremely bad for our land, animals, water, and our people. Please go back to Canada and ruin your own land. I'm concerned, caring native. No pipeline, please.
My name is January Bill. B-I-L-L. And I'm a Clamath Falls resident. And I'm an oil wildlife rehabilitator for the state. And I'm here to represent Bird Alix, a nonprofit, and also to be a voice for wildlife. I'm here today to respectfully request the Oregon Department of State Lands to deny the Pembina Pipeline Corporation the required removal fill permits for the Jordan Cove Project. The project is not consistent with the protection and conservation of our Oregon cap waterways, and therefore, the company does not meet the application requirements and should be denied. As a person who responds to pipeline leaks and accidents and oil spills through rehabilitating the impacted wildlife, I see firsthand the immense suffering and significant impacts to wildlife, surrounding the lands, the water, and to the people that live there. The construction and removal and fill alone for this project will have detrimental impacts to native wildlife and their habitat. I feel fossil fuel pipelines should be considered an archaic energy system. Leaks and accidents are inevitable part of these systems. All you have to do is do the research and see how many spills happen every day. It's not a question if the waters, wildlife, and land will be impacted if the removal fill permit is issued. And for these reasons, I strongly oppose this project. And I hope the Department of the State of Lands make the right decision for our future and deny the permit.
All right, gentlemen, two will be down here. Those of you who have to scoot forward, please. I'll call up two more. Shane Nils and Preston Lewis.
I'm not sure that works, so we're going to stick with this one. We're going to stick with both of them.
Okay. Ralph Pina. Vice Chair for Clamath County Republican Central Committee. Number one thing for me with Clamath County is our economic catastrophe that we have going on for our people along with the rest of this state. So here's something to think about. Long Island, New York. Highest per-house tax in the nation. Highest energy cost in the nation per household. Highest welfare payout in the nation. the nation per household, highest welfare payout in the nation. Also, by the way, highest in people leaving Long Island, New York. All of this has happened because Long Island said no to the Shoreham Power Plant Project. Long Island said no to the safe LNG storage facilities that they were going to build on the north shore of Long Island, between Long Island and Connecticut. Long Island said no to how many power productive companies that were going to come in, do things the right way, create jobs, growth, economic explosion for the area. I'm fully for Jordan Cove. There's not a project on this earth that's not without its risks. But I'm sure Jordan Cove isn't an amateur at this either. I think they're probably going to have their ducks in a row. And I'd rather go with doing something for our county that's going to benefit all our people, including my kids. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you be on the microphone?
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Ron Crete, R-O-N-C-R-E-T-E. I'm here to speak for my newborn great-grandchild because she doesn't have a voice yet to be able to say what I'm about to say. The cumulative effects of this project on the human and wildlife environment are monumental and probably near impossible to numerically assess. The long-range and near-term impacts being assessed incrementally cannot speak to the regional and global impacts adding CO2 to the atmosphere and the resultant increases in global, regional, and local warming that will affect our environment for ourselves, our children, and their children. The drawdown on atmospheric carbon dioxide loading begins with not approving the removal fill permit for the Jordan Cove LNG and Pacific Connector pipeline. Thank you.
Good kind, Dean. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Crete, and congratulations on that great-grandchild. All right, the next two, and I'll call up two more. Let's see. Did I call Preston Lewis? You're here. Okay, great. Shayla Ochoa and Robert Crane.
My name is Allison Andrews, A-L-I-S-O-N-A-N-D-R-E-W-S. And I'm a concerned parent of two boys, age six and eight, and also a business owner who belongs to the Chamber of Commerce, who is against this project. Our business is eco-solar and electric, and we've been in the community for over a decade and employing local folks. And I'll keep this fairly short, but I just want to express that I'm against this project. One of my main concerns is the clearcutting that will cross hundreds of waterways that's been discussed, and how that will actually warm up the waters and affect the wildlife as well as worsen our drought situation. And with the fires that have been occurring lately, that's not a way to go. The other concern that I have is the possibility of this causing additional fires, and I don't think that we can afford that risk with, you know, potential explosions or that sort of thing. Anyway, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. There you go.
Robert Kingzett, K-I-N-G-Z-E-T, Clamath resident. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I am speaking to express strong support for the Jordan Cove and Pacific Connector project. Very important to this region of the state, and I know they're working very diligently to meet all of your ODSL regulations and standards in this permit process. Clamath County has a long history, number of decades, with large pipelines running through our region, and our experience has been very positive with that, an excellent safety record. The drilling equipment to be used on this project is world-class, using the HDD techniques that improve that safety margin immensely in terms of trying to not damage our waterways and ecosystems. The economic benefits to this part of the state are enormous with this project. Most people know it's a $10 billion project in total. Will provide $60 million in property taxes to Coos, Douglas, Jackson, and Clamath Counties. The estimate is about $6 million to Clamath County. In addition, there'll be 6,000 jobs at the construction, with an average salary of $85,000. That's tremendous in our area. And there'll be 200 more jobs along the pipeline and at this LNG facility in Coos Bay that will be permanent. In short, this project will be the biggest positive boost we've had since being so severely impacted by the Great Recession a decade ago. Local leaders are very strongly in support of the project. Representative Greg Walden, Senator Dennis Lencicke, Representative Warner, who spoke earlier, Clamath County Commissioners, Derek DeGroot spoke earlier, City of Millin, the mayor spoke, their city council, the Chamber of Commerce, and KCSA. There is a cost-benefit ratio for every project involving natural resources. This project has an exceptionally high return to our community for the modest risks we are taking. Please support this permit and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, two folks come down, and I'll call two more. We're moving right along. Thank you. Ralph Op and Hannah Schroeder.
My name is Matthew Jensen, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-J-E-N-S-E-N, and I'm president and business representative of Labor's Local 737. We are a statewide local that represents members throughout Oregon, many who live in Clamath as well as Coos County and all counties along the pipeline. I personally am from Albany. We make livings, good family wage livings, off of these so-called temporary jobs. We make careers out of them. Our members all have full family health care and a pension that they're able to rely on, and I'm speaking on their behalf for this project to be approved. Our members work for multiple signatory contractors who would be bidding on work for the fill and removal on this project. Our contractors have high safety standards, in-house training to uphold those standards, and our members also have free unrestricted use of our training center to attain skills to be used on the project associated with the safe removal and fill of soils on the project as well as environmental protections on the pipeline right away. So I urge you to consider approving the permit.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shane Nels. I'm the president and business agent of Local 29, based in Portland. We cover the state of Oregon. I represent over 1,400 working women and men who would like the opportunity to work on this responsible project. We stand in strong support of the Jordan Cove Pacific Connector project. We work, live, and enjoy the outdoors of Oregon and southwest Washington, and we all are conservators, conservationists as well. These aren't temporary jobs for our members. These kind of projects allow our members to work near where they live and enjoy a good life with benefits. We ask for a fair process and to approve this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll take that. All right, the two sitting on the end, come forward, and I'll call up Ashia Wilson. I want that name too. Laura Schroeder. Is that related to Hannah Schroeder? Aha, all right, you're sisters. Okay, great. And we'll start over here.
Thank you.
Okay, first and last.
Yeah.
Okay, so my name is Preston Lewis, P-R-E-S-T-O-N-L-E-W-I-S. I am from Chillicoon, Oregon, the Clamath Tribes.
We had something fall.
It's all good. Keep going. I got it.
And I am part of the Clamath Tribes Youth Council, and I am here to respectfully tell Jordan Cove to please decline this opposition, reason being because there may be some positives about this opportunity right now in the present, but I like to look at the bigger picture for the future of children and a lot of other kids who aren't born yet. And this will affect waterways, graveyards, history. This probably will change history altogether as we know it. And thank you for this opportunity to speak. My comment. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shayla Ochoa, S-H-A-Y-L-A-O-C-H-O-A. I am treasurer for the Clamath Tribal Youth Council. When you think about the pipeline, my personal opinion, I think it's scary to think about. I don't like the whole idea of killing or hurting our wildlife. It affects our soil, our water, our land, affects my future as a youth, it affects my future children's future and other youth as well. We already put the earth enough as it is. We need to give her time to heal, her being our mother earth. This pipeline would only make it worse, and I don't like to think about that. So I oppose of the pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, my dear. I really appreciate members of the Youth Tribal Council and all the young people in the room because it's important that we hear from all ages, but especially the youngsters who are just starting to get a voice and express their own opinions. I really want to tell you much. I appreciate that. All right, we've got a couple of elders in front of us now. So, gentlemen, we'll start over there.
My name is Robert Crane, R-O-B-E-R-T-C-R-A-N-E. I am a, my whole family is from the Tillamook area, and I am a third-generation union member. I am also a business agent and a trustee for Local 701 Operating Engineers. I represent over 4,000 operators in the entire state of Oregon, and these jobs are good livable wages for 4,000 different people in my trade, let alone all the rest that are going to be working on this project. We have an apprenticeship program that hires new apprentices each and every year at a livable wage of $28 an hour plus a health benefit and insurance. We will be employing many of the operators from this particular area all the way through to Coos Bay. I want to let everyone know that in the 43 years that I have worked in the construction trade, the safety standards are absolutely the tightest that I have ever seen nowadays. My reason for asking you to approve this project is for the good livable wages, and as far as everyone indicating that they are temporary wages, during 43 years of my career, every job I've ever had has been a so-called temporary job, and I've made quite a career out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just a second.
Yes, my name is Ralph Op, R-E-L-P-H-O-P, and I'm a resident of Clamath Falls for nearly 50 years, but a resident of Oregon for almost most of my 82 years I've been alive. So I have a lot of hope and feelings for the state of Oregon. I'm a wildlife and habitat biologist, mostly retired, and more than that, I'm a conservationist, and a conservationist believes in wise use of our natural resources. I'm here to speak for the wildlife and their environments, and it bothers me that we continue to ask wildlife to move over. Mr. Nicholas spoke a while ago about access being accessed. Access is created through some of our more natural areas, wild areas, and it's very disturbing to our wildlife. We lose a lot of the habitat effectiveness by this type of access and heavy use of areas. We will continue to open up more area, I think, with this pipeline. I object to the developer, Jordan Cove LNG. For the hype that they've laid on us here for the past whatever time here, it bothers me quite a bit. I think they're here to spread a lot of money, which they have done, and it bothers me that coming in like they're trying to buy our mines, as well as greasing the skids for their project. A dear friend of mine put it very well, they're putting a lot of razzle-dazzle on this. As a true and dedicated conservationist, I see some of the literature messages could well be labeled as something we used to call eco-pornography. I also object that the county will send natural gas to a hub in southern Clamath County and have shipped out in Coos Bay to foreign countries. I especially object that Pembina is trying to gain power in the domain in order to take reluctant gas lane right away from private owners to court to gain their access.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the next two come forward, and I'm going to call four up. I guess I got a little line. Terry Kimble, Jeff, oh dear. Jeff, you are with Pacific Northwest RSC. I can't read the last name, starts with a K. Doug, oh, Doug Matheson? Regina, oh dear.
Ben Chixala.
Ben Chixala. Okay, and I think that fills my seats. All right, we'll start over here.
I'll give you this one.
Hello, my name is Hannah Schroeder, H-A-N-N-A-H-S-D-H-R-O-E-D-E-R. I'm part of the Clamath Tribes Youth Council. I am the chairman. I'm 16 years old, and I live in Chillicoon, Oregon. I'm here to say that on behalf of the Youth Council, we oppose this pipeline. One more that comes to mind is intergenerational trauma, I think was? Yeah, passing down trauma to the younger youth. We've already, as Native Americans, lost a lot of our culture, and by doing this, you're taking away more of our culture, our roots, our berries, our meat, everything, our water. All of that stuff is from the water, and you guys are putting this pipeline through the water. So you're taking away our culture and our way of life. Our mother earth needs to heal, and it needs time to process, and the water is a very, very big part of our life, and so we need this water. And just thinking about it, my younger siblings don't have a voice, but I want to be their voice, and I want to say that I want them to learn their culture, but we need our water to learn our culture. We need a lot of stuff to learn our culture from the mother earth, but by putting this pipeline in, you are taking our culture away. So ketchup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Schroeder, L-A-U-R-A-S-D-H-R-O-E-D-E-R. I am part of the Clamath Tribal Youth Council as their secretary, and what this pipeline does is it affects our future generation. The future generation is slowly losing our culture. Our culture involves water, and with this culture, we are needing our water. The water will help us heal, and with the water, we need our things like our traditional foods. We want our traditional ways. We are trying to get our traditional ways back more and more. And so when you are putting in this pipeline, you are hurting us, our future generation, and our traditional ways, and money and oil cannot replace our traditional ways. It cannot replace our future generation. So ketchup. Thank you.
All right, the next two. All right, the next two come forward and then I'll call up three more. I'm kind of losing track here, so let me check the box. Kayla Farrell Smith, Sherri Keys, and David Berger.
Hello, my name is Kateryne Kimball. I am an outlarge, K-A-T-E-R-I-K-I-M-B-O-L. I'm an outlarge member for the Klamath Youth Council and I am here because I do not agree with going along with the pipeline that is going to be put here if we don't stand up. I think that it's going to affect our next generations and this generation if we do that because it just, as Laura said, our water is what we have and it's our tradition and it gives our, it gives us life. You can't have, you can't live without water, basically. Our traditions are with water, our meat, our fish, and basically everything we do is with water and we can't do that if the pipeline is going to be put in. Our culture will be taken away and we just like, we just started putting in, putting back the chwan in our rivers, so I would like to oppose to this pipeline. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ash Wilson, A-S-H-I-A-W-I-L-S-O-N. I live in Chillicothe, Oregon. I would like to oppose the pipeline and I hope that you guys deny the DSL permit and I say this because it jeopardizes the water and it jeopardizes our dam removal and salmon returning in 2021. That also will endanger our chwan and copdoo who are, who are already on the list to go extinct and their, our fish that are in our rivers and lakes. I also come from a family of hunters and gatherers and fishermen and so as a Klamath tribal member, my whole family sustains theirselves by hunting and gathering our own meat and fishing. My nephew, who is only two, knows how to fish and he, that's one of his favorite things to do, he'll cry to go fishing and so I don't want that to be taken away from him at the age of two. That's not something that I want to happen and I also have been a part of the ROAST Rivers. It's an international water organization that is for free flowing rivers and so we have done water exchanges and one of the things is protecting our water and making sure that it's okay. And so that would conflict with that whole organization. And I also work with Ancestral Guard, which is also a nonprofit organization that is about indigenous networking and tribal ecology and so that's another thing that would jeopardize our first foods and just traditional way of life. And I'm also part of the Klamath Tribes Youth Leadership Council, which has officially opposed this pipeline and so I just, I don't want to see any more detrimental effects or events happening in my community. And I know that many people said that pipelines have been here for six years, but that doesn't make it natural, it doesn't make it okay for them to be here. So, thank you.
With all those activities, do you have time to sleep, my dear?
Yeah, and I'm actually graduating high school early, so.
Okay.
I'm only 16.
Congratulations. All right, come on down, next two, so I'll call up two more. Let's see, Lori Balvin and Orville Schroeder.
Hello, my name is Jeff Keane. I'm a service representative for the 24,000 members of Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters, K-I-H-N, 6,600 of which work here in the great state of Oregon. I would like to talk briefly about one aspect of the economic benefits of the Jordan Cove project. For decades, the use of Southern Oregon have denied vocational education in high schools. Budget cuts have slashed youth programs, limiting young men and women the opportunity to learn about construction trades. The Jordan Cove project will employ thousands of construction workers. Hundreds of these jobs will be done by apprentices. The youth of this region will finally have an opportunity of a career in the construction trades. The carpenters' union, as well as many other union trades, provide a four-year, virtually cost-free, state-regulated apprenticeship program. That's no college debt. Infrastructure in this country is crumbling. The workforce is aging. We need well-trained men and women to continue the long tradition of superior trace people in our great country. By the time the Jordan Cove project is complete, many of these apprentices will turn out as journeymen. As journeymen, our young people will be able to use this career throughout this state, country, and around the world. A union professional carpenter career is a family wage career, a career where a person can raise a family, buy a house or land, build on, have affordable healthcare and a pension so they can retire comfortably with dignity and respect. These professional carpenters contribute to the federal, state, and tax, the local tax base, not depleted, no longer dependent on government handouts to make ends meet. These are jobs and careers our families need to grow and prosper in our community. This project will also help relieve Asian countries dependency on coal. Coal, the use for energy, is twice as polluting as natural gas. I am all in favor of clean energy, but the fact of the matter is we are nowhere close to providing clean energy we need for the U.S., let alone the world. Let us help Asian countries wean itself off of coal and provide the economic relief Southern Oregon so badly needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And I am a hunter, a fisherman, a kayaker, and a camper.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Matheson, right here in Klamath Falls, D-O-U-G-M-A-T-H-E-S-O-N. I'd like to remind you decision-makers of a particular thing that I also want to ask the Canadian employees of the Canadian company back there and my fellow citizens, whom I thank for being concerned and involved enough to be here. A detail that I want to ask you to Google or consider, how many inches of sea level have been added since 1980? This is satellite verified, four inches. If you multiply that by the square miles of sea level surface around the world and then ask yourself, where does that water come from? It comes from melted ice. And then do a quick calculation, how many cubic miles of ice have melted since 1980? You'll figure out that it's about 9,000 cubic miles of ice. Then if you quickly Google what we call the heat of fusion, the energy that it takes to melt a solid into a liquid. Ice has been melted with no temperature change, zero Celsius to zero Celsius. Untold quadrillions of kilocalories have gone into melting ice instead of raising atmospheric temperatures. Yes, we have the ten hottest years on record in recent years, but that would have been much more severe had not energy been disappearing into simply melting ice. Yes, there's more ice to be melted, but this points out a reality that's important. Climate change is real and global warming would be much worse if energy wasn't disappearing in what we can superficially dismiss as a harmless way. Guys, we need to be accelerating our use of renewable energies and weaning ourselves off of fossil fuels. This is doable and this is urgent. And speaking of jobs, all the job numbers you've talked about, imagine the jobs created in renewable energy, solar, wind, et cetera. Guys, we can do this, we can do better.
Thank you, sir. Next two come forward, please. Albert Nicholson, I think I missed you, that completes pages one, two, and three. Bonnie Nork, did I call you? No, great. Okay, I'm a little bit behind, you can just hang out there and I'll get to you. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Regina Chigazola. I'm here today with a union, the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Association, and also a group called Save California Salmon.
Can you spell your last name?
Sorry, Chigazola is C-H-I, C-H-I again, C-O-L-A. The Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Association relies heavily, as a trade organization and as a union, on healthy rivers and a healthy ocean. We recently filed a lawsuit against the oil industry for polluting our oceans and causing crab shutdowns throughout the west coast every single year. Plus, our rivers are being so polluted and dewatered that the salmon are also not coming back. We have worked for over, for almost 20 years now to get the Klamath dams removed and we've worked very hard to make sure the salmon can come back into the Klamath tribe's territory and so that they're restored for all the tribal members on the Klamath River and for the fishermen so that there are enough fish for all of us to have jobs and subsidence. We support the tribes in opposing this pipeline and we also oppose the pipeline and we ask for green jobs and for our jobs to be respected. We also want to point out that if the salmon are coming back to this area, which will bring jobs in recreation and bring salmon back to the people, that we cannot have pipeline explosions in the Keenmill Reach, that is the most water quality impaired reach of the Klamath River, and we cannot afford it. The downriver tribes can't afford it, the fishermen cannot afford it, Oregon jobs cannot afford it. And if we're going to respect jobs, we need to go to a green energy future and so we oppose this pipeline. Please stop Jordan Cove and please respect commercial fishermen and tribal people. Thank you.
Well, Casey, it was Kaila Farrell Smith. My name's Kaila Farrell Smith, it's K-A-I-L-A, it's hyphenated last name, F as in Frank, A-R-R-E-L-L, hyphen Smith, S-M-I-T-H. Yeah, I work for a nonprofit, an arts nonprofit called Signal Fire and we take artists and activists out on backcountry travel, so we do a lot of hiking and backpacking and camping. But today I'd like to speak as a Klamath tribal member and property owner here in Klamath County. As a lifelong Oregonian and Klamath tribal member, I use our clean waterways for swimming and whitewater rafting. Fish is one of, is part of my main diet and, you know, I come from a community of fisher peoples who have been fishing from these waters since time immemorial. I am extremely concerned about the pollution from a frac out spill in any of the 485-plus waterways the Pacific Connector pipeline would go underneath. My father, Al Smith, who's a Klamath and Modoc tribal member, who's passed away, but he was born on the Williamson River and on the upper Klamath Lakes 100 years ago in 1919. He grew up harvesting wokas, which is from the lily pad in our lakes and it's a seed that's collected, it's one of our ancestral food. And so he, yeah, he grew up harvesting wokas, he's fishing and living off of the upper Klamath Lakes with his mother and grandmother. I want to be able to harvest and live off of my ancestral foods, which are drastically threatened by the Canadian LNG pipeline and export terminal. The proposed frac gas that would be transported through Southern Oregon is mostly made of methane and methane is a potent greenhouse gas, a huge contributor to, I'm going to say, climate disaster because I don't think it's more than just change or global warming. As a resident and property owner, I'm very concerned about the growing threats of wildfires and drought. Jordan Cove Terminal would be the largest greenhouse gas emitter in the state of Oregon. Please consider the drastic impacts these projects would have on our clean drinking water and ancestral homelands. Sep, Ketcha, thank you for hearing my comment.
Okay, two down and I think I called one extra, so the rest of you who are down, please help me understand where I'm at. Okay, me too. Did I call Orville Schroeder? There you are, young man. All right, just a minute. And Jason, Jacob, and Austin, oh my gosh, you told me how to pronounce it, that's great, full Mickey. So that's you, come on forward and we will hear from you first.
Hello, my name is Sherri Keys, S-H-E-R-R-I-K-I-E-S. I live here in Klamath Falls. I have lived in Southern Oregon since 2001. My husband was born in Medford and raised in Trail, where my, his parents and my brother and sister-in-law and my two nieces live. My girls were born in Prospect in Klamath Falls. As a former wildlife biologist and now a stay-at-home mother, my concerns range from the impacts to the rivers that we, as a family, raft and kayak and the forest that we hike, ski, and camp in. My concerns also range to the gross disruption to our region's unique habitats and forest types and its plants, insects, and animals by way of edge effects along the 229-mile route. The proposal, in my opinion, does not adequately protect our waterways, streams, rivers, and mountains. Each waterway has its own unique biogeochemistry and ecology. The proposal is inadequate to protect this and our rural grass rivers. I'm deeply concerned about the heightened wildfire risk in a region already marked by high risk for high severity fires and about the impact of months and months of smoke on my children's health and our family's ability to be outdoors. This wildfire risk from pipeline explosions. Additionally, the almost certainty of a catastrophic Cascadia subduction earthquake leaves me wondering how this project has ever moved beyond cursory consideration. Lastly, as this project would be the largest climate polluter in the state and transport frac gas, which is terrible, at the site of extraction, I strongly oppose this project and ask you to deny the permit.
My name is David Berger, D-A-V-I-D-B-U-R-G-E-R. First off, I'd like to say I'm a life resident of Oregon and 20 years in Bend, Deschutes County. I represent several different organizations for a multitude of things. I represent local 290 plumbers and pipe fitters. We employ 4,600 members in Oregon on projects just like the Jordan Cove, LNG, and the pipeline. I'd also like to say that I represent East Cascade Workforce Investment Board. I was appointed by county commissioners. I represent the 10 counties in the center of the state, from Washington, Cleardown to California, which is this area as well. We are in support of projects like this that bring economic development to counties like Klamath that really need it and we understand that there are pros and cons to everything. We try to weigh that out. I hunt, I fish, I live in this area. I do not want to see anything destroyed myself, but there are things that have to be done for people to live. I just hope that it's done in the proper ways and I ask that this panel please take into consideration this project and their permits. Please follow the law and everything that's been applied and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, we are doing great. We've got about 40 minutes and I have about 20 people to go, so I think we're going to make it. Two of you come on forward and the other two slide down and I will call three more people. And I, I just have to emphasize once again how much I appreciate the audience participation and your respectfulness because as one person pointed out tonight, you're all neighbors and we do need to get along with each other and with differing viewpoints, sometimes that's hard. So three more people, let's see, Lou Christian, Ron Matheson, and Carl Gilchrist.
Hello, my name is Orville Schroeder, O-R-V-I-L-L-E-S-C-H-R-O-E-D-E-R. And I would really not like this pipeline to go through because my dad, he's a firefighter and as of last year, I couldn't walk outside with the sea and smoke just straight in front of my face and if this water and this stuff catches on fire, it'll just increase the more smoke. And another thing is our animals and water. This is the stuff that our people live off of and if this stuff goes, we'd have to find a new way of living. If our fish and elk and deer, if they all went, would have to find new meat source and if our berries and all that stuff went, we'd have to find new source of food with that. And a lot of this food is a part of our traditions and if our traditions are taken away from us, the kids that are upcoming won't know what to do because they'll have to find a new way of living and, thank you. And, thank you.
My name is Lori Baumann, L-O-R-I-B-A-U-M-A-N-N, and I represent over 2,000 members from the Laborers Union, Local 737 for Oregon. I want to say I very much respect all the young people who are coming forward and speaking up. It takes a lot of courage. I can only speak to the fact that this is the way we make our living. There are hundreds of thousands of miles of pipeline in the ground already that is functioning very well. We are professional. We live here as well. Our members love the land that they live on. This is what we do for a living. We are safe, and we are conservatives as well, conservationists as well. We aren't here to damage the surrounding area, we aren't here to damage the wildlife. We're here to make a living, and we look forward to showing that we can do this professionally and safely, and show you that we can do this well. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right, two more come on down, and I will call, let's see, Derek DeGroot, Jeff Gritz, I think, Franny Howes, and...
Derek got to speak.
I did?
Yes.
Uh, I don't remember that. He's not checked, so I made a mistake. All right, Franny Howes and Emma Rohr.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Nork, B-O-N-N-I-E-N-O-R-K, and I adamantly oppose this pipeline. I am a longtime resident of Klamath Falls and disappointed to hear so many of our elected representatives in support of this. We must not sell out the health of our citizens and environment for temporary paychecks and bribes. Profits over people must stop. Will any of these people in support of the project be held accountable when something goes wrong? History says no. I have been asked to read a statement for a friend of mine who cannot be here this evening, but who this affects even more personally than myself. Good evening, my name is Megan Vaughn. My husband and I, along with our four children, live on a forty-acre livestock ranch in Eagle Point, Oregon. We oppose the Jordan Cove LNG Pipeline for three reasons. First, this pipeline would directly affect everything in our lives. The proposed pipeline would be routed directly in front of our home. The pipeline would require us to relocate our well, fill our pond, and expose our family to dangerous chemicals. Secondly, this pipeline would decrease our native salmon population located in the water flow through our pond and surrounding property, and decrease habitat for local bald eagles, deer, and other wildlife that depend on the pond and local stream. And lastly, the pipeline and transported gas are a health and environmental risk to our entire region. For our home and ranch, the pipeline would require an easement road be built on a quarter-mile of our property directly along our front yard. We would have to relocate our well, and we would have to fill in our pond as a road that would have to be built over it. Our house would directly face this road, because our pond would no longer exist in our front yard. Our pond houses countless fish and their habitats, including native salmon, who swim into the pond from a local stream and continue upstream to spawn. Additionally, we have bald eagles that hunt and live near our pond and surrounding land. The cancer-causing chemicals used to clear the land to make this road would undoubtedly seep into the groundwater on our property, which would have certain, yet unknown, future consequences for my family, myself, and my livestock.
I'm Jason Gilckel, J-A-S-O-N-G-O-E-C-K-E-L. I'm a St. Helens, Oregon resident. I'm also a business rep with the Oregon Laborers, Local 737. I'm here to show my strong support for the Jordan Cove Project. This is going to have a large impact on all the fellow laborers, brothers, sisters out there. We need the good wage-paying jobs, pension, health, and welfare, which this project will provide. It will also have a trickle-down effect on the local economy here in the Coos Bay area. All of our jobs are temporary jobs, and that's just the way we earn our living. So here's some of my strong support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next two come forward, and I'm going to call up Anita Ward, James Hine, and Gary Zieg, he must have signed up twice, because I know we heard him. Gary Zieg.
We did. At least there's two of them.
No. And Ro, Rowena Jackson, I think? Okay. If you guys can make sure that you spell your names slowly for the transcriptionist, and then make sure that you tell us where you're coming from or where you're from, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here to hear us tonight. My name is Lou Christian, L-O-U, last name is Christian, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-A-N. I am the business manager for Plumbers and Steamfitters, Local 290. I live in Tewolleton, Oregon, and have lived in, born in Springfield, lived in Portland, and lived in southern Oregon in Gold Hill during high school, moving back to Eugene, doing an apprenticeship for Local 41 at that time, and then have worked around the state and around the country in this trade for forty years. And we build pipelines, we build construction projects. We have, as was mentioned earlier, 4,600 members roughly in the jurisdiction. We have over 500 apprentices, men and women, learning a trade that will serve them the rest of their lives. And having lived in Oregon and hunted and fished extensively in our state, we want to see everything done properly, so that the streams are protected, so that work is done, and things are done correctly, so there is minimal, or if any, thing negative done to the environment. And these jobs, like has been said before, we're different than most people. Our jobs is, our job is to work ourself out of a job. The first day on the job is one day closer to finishing the job, and then we go to another The environment that we live in is very important to us also, and that's why we want you to take a very serious look at the way the mitigations have been done, and if they adequately address the reasoning for the permits. And thank you for a fair hearing and a chance to express our views. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Franny Howes, F-R-A-N-N-Y-H-O-W-E-S, and I live in Klamath Falls. DSL should deny the removal fill permit, because Jordan Cove has failed to show that the project is consistent with the best use and the protection of Oregon's waters. The Jordan Cove Pipeline would do irreparable harm to our ecosystems, and there is no going back should you approve this. These construction jobs are temporary, but the damage is permanent and outweighs the benefits of temporary jobs. The damage to the water, the damage to the land, and the damage to the natural environment. The pipeline would disturb fragile wetland ecosystems that are home to water birds and migratory birds. This harms the earth as well as the tourist economy of Klamath Falls that depends on bird watching and natural recreation. The DSL should not allow Jordan Cove to dredge our rivers and streams or fill wetlands. The pollution of these waters would harm each of us on a daily basis. I am also concerned about the impact of the Jordan Cove Pipeline on sovereign native peoples. The cultural damage caused by destroying the natural resources that they rely on to practice their traditional culture would be devastating and part of a pattern of irreparable harm caused by the United States government to native peoples since the founding of the country. Please do not allow the dredge, allow this permit to go through for the Jordan Cove Pipeline. Thank you.
All right, next two come on down, and those of you who move, and we're really closing in on the end of this hearing. Lennon Eaton, Colby Zar, oh boy, Zerbe? Colby. Colby, if you're here, you know your last name, come forward. And Malia Florindo.
Hi, my name is Emma Rohr, and that's spelled R-O-H-W-E-R. Thank you so much for coming here to listen to us, and for all those who have testified in favor of the project, I hope you enjoy your visit to our community. I would like to echo Preston Lewis of the Youth Council and ask you to consider the big picture when making your cost-benefit analysis on this project. In particular, I want you to consider the possibility that the mere fact that the Klamath Tribes are against this project should be enough to deny the permit on its base. Putting a Canadian company over the original inhabitants of Oregon is a wound that will be very hard to heal, and that is a very large cost. Secondly, I want you to consider climate change. You know, no one act causes all of climate change, but it's all of our decisions put together. Climate change will affect all of Oregon's waterways and could lead to the extinction of our salmon runs and our suckers, and these fish are the soul of Oregon, and that it would be a huge cost. And I want you to also consider the big picture of the fossil fuel industry. This is a dying industry. The future for our community is going to be in tourism, renewable energy. Renewable energy deals are some of the fastest-growing jobs in this entire country. They are going to bring way more than $6 million to our community over time. This benefit of this project is uncertain and is short-lived, and all that will be left to us is the risk and the culpability for the greatest environmental tragedy of our generations, and yet another act of disrespect towards the people who took care of these waterways for thousands of years, and that would be a huge cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gritz, J-E-F-F-G-R-I-T-Z. I'm from Hermiston, Oregon. I'm a rep for Lyona, Local 737. We represent over 2,000 construction members, as well as, we've represented over a couple hundred Klamath County employees for probably close to fifty years. Projects like these are very important, not only to the construction workers of the state of Oregon, but also as well to stimulate the economies, especially in three or four of some of the most challenged counties in the state, as far as what this, what this money and what these projects will bring to those areas will benefit, you know, tenfold. You know, we talk about temporary construction jobs. Well, twenty-six years ago, I started on a temporary construction job that hugged right in Mullen, that's hugged major pipelines. You've hosted this for many, many years, on the TransCanada Project, which I worked it all the way through Oregon, and that's where I started my career, on a temporary project, and worked myself up to the ranks throughout my career. Projects like these are the projects that allow us to put and get our young folks through our CTE programs, sponsorship programs, et cetera. These are the perfect projects to put our young folks to work and start earning a family wage and a pension and a health, health and welfare and all of that. So I strongly support this project. I've been at every one of these meetings, or darn near every one of them, for the last twelve years. This is our third round, and we need to move this project forward. Thank you.
Great, next two. The rest of you scoot down. Don Givens, excuse me, Russ Davis and Sarah Silverman. And then after that, we only have three more signed up, unless I miss my buddy. We have another paper coming.
Oh. It's great.
It's gonna be midnight.
Nope, we're stopping today. We're done today.
Thank you for letting me come up here and speak. I am 100% for Jordan Cove. My name is James Hine, and last name is spelled H-E-I-N. I am thankful I live in a republic. I'm from Medford, Oregon. I've lived in Oregon fifty-seven years. I was born in Medford in 1961. I am thankful I live in a republic that is governed by laws. My family and I are in total 100% support of the Jordan Cove Project. I'm a father of three kids, three grandchildren, and a new one on the way in March, so I'm very thankful for that. I want to give thanks to Creator for giving us liquid petroleum gas that we can clean, burn, and use. If we were to get rid of gasoline or diesel and run all of our automobiles on it, most of the pollution problem would go away. I'm thankful that we have natural gas we can export to China. That country is totally full of pollution. They're importing tons of coal, and they're polluting. It's just out of sight. You can get on the website and look at the pollution going on. If they have clean, burning, natural gas in China, it'll help control the pollution, it'll help everybody in the world. In Medford, trucks operate on natural gas and methane gas. We have our public transportation that runs on natural gas, virtually no pollution. Our trash trucks run on natural gas. The Pacific Power Light pickups and stuff either run on electricity or natural gas, so. I want to thank again the International Union of Operating Engineers for inviting me to ride along with them, to come here and have a chance to speak here, and I want to thank you guys for your time. And once again, I'm 100% for the Jordan Cove Project.
My name is Rowena Jackson, R-O-W-E-N-A-J-A-C-K-S-O-N, and I'm from the Klamath Tribe's Territory.
Folks, thank you. We're still having people testify. All right.
My name is Rowena Jackson, Klamath tribal member, R-O-W-E-N-A-J-A-C-K-S-O-N, and I'm from the Klamath Tribe's Territory. It is a given to protect and love our fish. For all my relations and next generations, Vicky Walker and Department of State lands, you too can be a water protector. As we gather on stolen homelands, deny the Pacific Connector, corporations dominate in order to excavate. For climate's sake, don't side with the snake. Water is life. A clear conscience is a blessing. No regrets in the afterlife, because you opposed and stopped the oppressing. My elders fought hard, near and far. Intergenerational trauma, I nurture my scar. I am water from Klamath and Crater Lake. I will protect our stolen vision village sites. I embrace tribal sacred sites. Rest in peace, my ancestors, heads-up oppressors and even investors. Against the gas pipelines, since the doctor and the discovery and on the front lines, I am bringing awareness and addressing the highlights. Since 1864, we are still at war. Ancestors are with me as I roll up my sleeves. Pipeline verbal track records most likely deceives eminent domain for capital gain. This mistreatment is so inhumane. In Wells Fargo, I divest because Mother Earth and her veins are stressed. Jordan Cove Pipeline, it's time to resign. This is my home, like the lava beds caught at Catacombs. Removal fill permit, yes to Jordan Cove removal, and yes to deny the permit. So I pray for the people, we overcome all this evil. This comment is the true definition of homeland security. All walks of life in solidarity, united we stand, as I raise my hand.
Thank you for your poetry. I really appreciate that. All right, next two. Oh my goodness, young lady. I am looking forward to your testimony. Victor Gross, Derek Pimble, and Jake Hatches. Do you want to go first?
I don't care.
Okay, what's your name, though?
My name's Lennon Eaton, L-E-N-I-N-H-E-A-T-O-N.
How old are you, my dear?
I'm nine years old.
Thank you.
And I think that in the, that I would like to grow, when I grow up, I would like to have a good life without earthquakes or stuff like that bothering the earth, because gasoline pumps and stuff like that can ruin our earth. And I don't really have anything else to say.
Thank you, Lennon.
I acquis. My name is Malia Florindo, M-A-H-L-I-J-A-F-L-O-R-E-N-D-O, and I'm from Orleans, California. I'm here with Safe California Salmon, and I come from the Wasco and Celeste Tribes of Oregon, and I... Oregon, and I also come from the Urok and Kadduk tribes in Northern California who are both dependent on the Klamath River. I am also here in solidarity with the other rivers and people of those rivers who will be affected by this project. Our rivers have been through so much, as have the people who have been fighting just to survive because of the destruction of the rivers. I specifically come from the lower Klamath Basin, and in the past few years, our salmon numbers have dropped exponentially. Alongside that, one of the tribes in our area has had one of the highest suicide rates in Indian country and the highest in California at the time. I use this as an example because I have never considered this a coincidence that our people are suffering alongside the river. This project will bring only more destruction to the many waterways it will cross. It will bring destruction to our climate, to the safety of indigenous women who will be in danger of man camps, destruction to indigenous food sources and materials and to indigenous food sources and materials and ceremony, which is genocide on indigenous peoples, and destruction to human life. I do not support this project in any way. Wa kla. Thank you.
Next two. Next two, please. One more. I've got three on page six, but I'm not going to call you up yet in time. I think we have enough time, so we're going to reach out. Sir?
Hello, my name is Derek Kimball. I'm a 2011 graduate of the University of Oregon Ducks with a Bachelor of Arts degree. It's D-E-R-E-K-K-I-M-B-O-L. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from U of O in 2011 Environmental Studies. One thing about coal bed methane is that 10,000-year-old aquifers that will never be replaced are ruined in the hydro fracking process to get this gas. So it's already contaminated. It's less than 1% of fresh water left on the earth that we're going to destroy to get this. Okay? And then the other thing is all the wildlife that the kids all mentioned, everything. But we have the opportunity to have zero energy architecture as a solution to these problems for the future. So why are we going to destroy the future for the generations when we do have solutions? This is not going to help us in the long run, but we need to have educated policymakers being educated and making the wise decisions that are sustainable. So this is a dirty gas. It's a dirty project, coal bed methane, fracking. So with that being said, you know, we're just going backwards into the future. So I think the kids pointed on, you know, right where this is sourced, near the Rocky Mountains, the aquifers, there's over 50,000 pronghorns and elk that are displaced in that area alone. And this would, with the Cascadia earthquake, this would destroy this ecosystem. So actually, we do not need this for the future generation. I strongly oppose it. We need to have innovation. This is the city of sunshine right here. The Klamath Basin has the most solar insulation, so why would we even do that? It's backwards. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to Klamath Falls for this meeting. Really appreciate the DSL being here. My name is Sarah Silverman, S-A-R-A-H-S-I-L-V-E-R-M-A-N, and I'm a resident of Klamath Falls.
The mic is not working.
The mic isn't working? You want me to move to this one?
No. They both have to be.
All right, is that any better? I apologize. To speak directly to the DSL's permitting process, people here have spoke about soil removal and displacement in Mullen as it relates to the pipelines that are currently there. I do not think that you can compare the topography of Mullen and this part of Southern Klamath County to that of properties going through the cascade along the Coquille River, along the Rogue River, or many of our other waterways. These are old growth forests, and they cannot be replaced. No amount of soil is going to make up for the removal of heritage trees. In addition, while this is focused on issues relating to soil removal and waterways, many are speaking to the economic effects. I find it unsettling that individuals who are with organizations that have accepted funds or grants from this corporation are speaking on behalf of this project. I think the fact that they've accepted that money speaks for itself. Finally, one of my very best friends and father of my two children is a 40-year steam fitter, pipe fitter, out of UA 393 in San Jose. He is currently in the final stages of interstitial lung disease, so I wish to speak to the gentleman in the green hats here. You are working in a dying energy that will kill you. Please find jobs in alternative energy that will not destroy our land. Please deny this permit. Respect the sovereign rights of the tribes and their ancestral grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next two. We have 10 minutes. We'll take four, so I'm going to take two more folks, and then I'm not going to be able to get to everyone, I don't think. So Julia Jackman and Ally Rosenbluth, come forward.
All right. Thank you. All right. My name is Jacob Hatcher, J-A-C-L-B-H-A-T-C-H-E-R, and I'm a old H-A-T-C-H-E-R. I'm an old Klamath tribal member, and I just want to start by saying, my daddy taught me that, you know, Creator God, he placed us right here in our homelands. You know, he could have placed us anywhere he wanted, but he took our time and he placed us, and he placed us right here, right here with our waters, our lakes, our rivers and streams. And I fish in these rivers, you know, I learned how to swim, I learned how to water ski and all that in these rivers, and my dad learned how to fish in these rivers, and I'm teaching my sons how to fish in these rivers. And with that being said, I'm going to talk to all you people in your green hats, you know.
I need you to turn around this way and speak into that.
I'm an industrial pipe fitter. I do that for a living. In first year that I was taught, you know, I'm a certified welder, your steam lines, air lines, water lines, gas lines, your regulators, your pressure relief valves, they all fail. They all failed. Learned in my first year that they all failed, that put this line in, it is guaranteed to fail. It's facts. It's not, you know, you don't understand our beliefs and how important it is to not be here, but those are facts that you guys have to look at. They failed, and they constantly need preventative maintenance on it. I just want to say that much.
Thank you. This gentleman, David. Thank you.
My name is Victor Gross, G-R-O-S-S. I am a property owner in Midland, Oregon. I noticed that this pipeline is going to go down Old Midland Road. I'm concerned with two things. Number one, if the pipeline should ever fail, I live on a well. That's how I get my water. It's pumped out of the ground. If any of this gas goes into the groundwater, I'm screwed. I'm here for purely selfish reasons, and I oppose this pipeline. The other thing I want to know, and this is a question I really have, is the question of eminent domain. How can a Canadian company impose eminent domain on my property? I am a citizen of the United States of America, and I do not understand how somebody who can come in from another country and take my land.
Thank you, sir. We will write down your question and get it posted to our website. The final two folks, and if you don't take all your time, I can slip in the last two. So here we go.
Thank you. My name is Julia Jackman, J-U-L-I-A-J-A-C-K-M-A-N. I'm a citizen of Klamath Falls, have lived here about 20 years. I am here to register my disapproval of the Jordan Cove LNG Pipeline Project. I am concerned about many aspects of this project. First is the fact that the pipeline is passing through a geologically active area, particularly in Klamath Falls and on the coast subduction zone, which is capable of a catastrophic earthquake. No pipeline can withstand such an earthquake, and a rupture will lead to huge negative impacts to land, air, and water. Secondly, I have concerns about the fact that the gas to be transported is derived from fracking, a method of extraction with many negative environmental impacts, which we've heard about already. Third, the potential for leaks and explosions could lead to catastrophic wildfires, especially in the current warming and drought-prone climate we live in now. I keep thinking about Paradise, California, and wonder how such fire conditions would mix with pressurized natural gas. It concerns me that the project is owned by a non-American company, and the beneficiaries of the gas will be foreign countries. I am troubled by the relentless and slick marketing that Pembina has engaged in to try to sell this project as being a perfect fit for Southern Oregon. I believe that Southern Oregon would be better served to pursue energy-related projects that are focused on renewable, clean sources. Wouldn't it be a win-win if the skilled tradesmen and women were using their talents to work in more sustainable technologies and projects? I respectfully ask the State Lands Department, deny permitting for this project. Thank you very much.
Tina Walker and Michael Fitzgerald. If you'll come up and be our final testifiers, if you'll take a seat.
Hi, my name is Ally, A-L-L-Y, Rosenbluth, R-O-S-E-N-B-L-U-T-H, and I live in Jackson County. I am lucky enough to work for an organization called Rogue Climate, which opposes this proposed LNG export in Mullen Fracked Gas Pipeline. So I'm really lucky to get to spend a lot of time in Klamath Falls with the community that is so adamantly tonight asking you to deny permits for the Jordan Cove project. Tonight, we have heard from 34 people opposing this project, all from Southern Oregon or Northern California, who would be impacted by the impacts to the waterways, where we've heard from 21 people who have been brought, who have come from out of state mostly, or who have taken money from the company to be here tonight, and I think that's important. We are asking that the DSL deny the removal of fill permit for many reasons, and we will submit it in more testimony, and you'll hear from us throughout this week. We will get to know each other well. But we want to make sure that the Department of State Lands look at the recent information request that the Department of Environmental Quality sent out. There are, there's no technical analysis in the applicant's application on the 600 miles of construction of roads and the landsides that may be impacted. Additionally, we are very concerned about the safety for our community members here in Southern Oregon. A new report came out that shows in the last 20 years, there have been over 5,500 total incidents of pipeline, pipeline explosions and fires. This summer, we saw in British Columbia, a pipeline explosion that caused a wildfire, much like could be the result of a pipeline explosion here in Southern Oregon, where forests are very, very dry. We want people to have good family wage jobs in our communities. We want that with clean energy and not further extension of the fossil fuel industry. Oregon has the opportunity right now, Director Walker, to stop this fracked gas export project and stand up for the climate in our communities for good.
All right, Michael Fitzgerald, and I didn't see Tina Walker come up. Oh, you're right there. Okay, both of you, come on up. You're the last people we're going to hear from tonight. I'm so glad. Come on up. This has just been a wonderful experience for me and my staff, and I want to thank all of your attendance, and we'll start with Michael.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Michael Fitzgerald, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D. I have lived in the Klamath Basin for 37 and a half years. I live less than two miles from the pipeline route and am concerned about my well and the underlying aquifer from which I draw water and domestic irrigation uses. One more pipeline is too many. The mitigation required to BLM, Forest Service, and Fish and Wildlife Soil and Water Conservation Criteria are small indicators of the deleterious effects the project must produce. The engineering impacts to water crossings have not been properly developed or researched, never mind the potential catastrophic effects of earthquake. Continued support of an industry project that is near extinction is foolhardy. Moving away from fossil fuels is necessary and necessary now. Continued support of the fossil fuel industry is digging a deeper hole and further indebted our children and grandchildren with the potential for irreversible climate change. Profit-only orientated system development is short-sighted and does not factor in the long-term degradation to our land, air, and water. Thank you.
Tina, the last two minutes are yours.
Oh, goodness. Last but not least, I'm nervous. My name is Tina Walker, T-E-N-A, Walker. I was born and raised here in Klamath Falls, been a native here all my life, seen a lot come and go. I don't know if this has been brought up, but I have a son, and he's the fifth-generation mill worker at Collins Products. The pipeline will go about 100 yards away from the mill, and I don't know if anyone's aware that the mill combusts, and DEQ has sanctions and different things in order, but just like anything else, you know, you get the heat, you get the pressure, you get buildup. What happens when that erupts? What happens to my son? You know, he's young. He's just starting out. He's my only son, who's going to carry on my legacy, my generation, for my future. What happens can, you know, your children can't be replaced. I'm sorry to say that, but they can't. I'm a grandma now. It's crazy, but it's beautiful, and I'm looking out for a future. I'm not looking out for a quick paycheck, a quick, you know, temporary job. I'm looking for a future, and I hope everybody considers that and looks deep into themselves and consider what it's going to do for our future. What's it going to do for my son? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to accept that testimony or those clapping hands as thank you for a really good hearing tonight. So I want to, the hearing is coming to a close. I want to thank everyone who submitted testimony, who came up here from the nine-year-old to the 93-year-old. It was an awesome day, and I appreciate all the comments. Every comment that was made tonight has been notated, and it will help inform our identification of issues the applicant will be asked to address as well as permit decisions for the project. If you have additional comments, please submit them in writing via email, mail, or fax as detailed on those yellow comment sheets. The comment deadline is February 3, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. If we get your comments at 5:01 p.m., I'm sorry, we won't accept it. So please get your comments in. Any of you who are tracking this know that tomorrow we will be in Central Point at the Jackson County Fairgrounds for another hearing at the same time. The public comment period, the hearing for this hearing is now closed. Thank you. Have a safe and pleasant drive home.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate your experience.
Citizen of Klamath Falls, have lived here about 20 years. I am here to register my disapproval of the Jordan Cove LNG Pipeline Project. I am concerned about many aspects of this project. First is the fact that the pipeline is passing through a geologically active area, particularly in Klamath Falls and on the coast subduction zone, which is capable of a catastrophic earthquake. No pipeline can withstand such an earthquake, and a rupture will lead to huge negative impacts to land, air, and water. Secondly, I have concerns about the fact that the gas to be transported is derived from fracking, a method of extraction with many negative environmental impacts, which we've heard about already. Third, the potential for leaks and explosions could lead to catastrophic wildfires, especially in the current warming and drought-prone climate we live in now. I keep thinking about Paradise, California, and wonder how such fire conditions would mix with pressurized natural gas. with pressurized natural gas. It concerns me that the project is owned by a non-American company, and the beneficiaries of the gas will be foreign countries. I'm troubled by the relentless and slick marketing that Pembina has engaged in to try to sell this project as being a perfect fit for southern Oregon. I believe that southern Oregon would better... be better served to pursue energy related projects that are focused on renewable, clean sources. Wouldn't it be a win-win if the skilled tradesmen and women were using their talents to work in more sustainable technologies and projects? I respectfully ask the State Lands Department deny permitting for this project. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tina Walker and Michael Fitzgerald. If you'll come up and be our final testifiers, if you'll take a seat.
Hi, my name is Ally, A L L I E Rosenbluth, R O S E N B L U T H, and I live in Jackson County. Um, I am lucky enough to work for an organization called Rogue Climate, which opposes this proposed LNG export channel and frack gas pipeline. So I'm really lucky to get to spend a lot of time in Klamath Falls with the community that is so adamantly tonight asking you to deny permits for the Jordan Cove project. Uh, tonight, we have heard from thirty-four people opposing this project, all from southern Oregon or northern California, who would be impacted by the impacts to the waterways, where we've heard from twenty-one people who have been brought, who have come from out of state mostly, or who have taken money from the company to be here tonight. And I think that's important. And we are asking that the DSL deny the removal of fill permit for many reasons, and we will submit it in more testimony. You'll hear from us throughout this week. We will get to know each other well. Um, but we want to make sure that the Department of State Lands look at the recent information requests that the Department of Environmental Quality sent out. Um, there are... There's no technical analysis in the applicant's application on the six hundred miles of construction of roads and the landsides that may be impacted. Additionally, we are very concerned about the safety for our community members here in southern Oregon. A new report came out that shows in the last twenty years there have been over five thousand five hundred total incidents of pipeline, uh, pipeline explosions and fires. Uh, this summer, we saw in British Columbia a pipeline explosion that caused a wildfire, much like could be the result of a pipeline explosion here in southern Oregon, where forests are very, very dry. Um, we want people to have good family wage jobs in our communities. We want that with clean energy and not further expansion, extension of the fossil fuel industry. Oregon has the opportunity right now, Director Walker, to stop this fracked gas export project and stand up for the climate and our communities for good.
All right, Michael Fitzgerald, and I didn't see Tina Walker come up. Oh, you're right there. Okay, both of you, come on up. You're the last people we're gonna hear from tonight. I'm so glad. Come on up. Uh, this has just been a wonderful experience for me and my staff, and I wanna thank all of your attendance. And we'll start with Michael.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Michael Fitzgerald, M I C H A E L F I T Z G E R A L D. I have lived in the Klamath Basin for thirty-seven and a half years. I live less than two miles from the pipeline route, and I'm concerned about my well and the underlying aquifer from which I draw water and domestic irrigation uses. One more pipeline is too many. The mitigation required to BLM, Forest Service, and Fish and Wildlife Soil and Water Conservation Criteria are small indicators of the deleterious effects the project must produce. The engineering impacts to water crossings have not been properly developed or researched, never mind the potential catastrophic effects of earthquake. Continued support of an industry project that is near extinction is foolhardy. Moving away from fossil fuels is necessary and necessary now. Continued support of the fossil fuel industry is digging a deeper hole and further indebted our children and grandchildren with the potential for irreversible climate change. Profit-only orientated system development is short sighted and does not factor in the long-term degradation to our land, air, and water. Thank you.
Tina, the last two minutes are yours.
Oh goodness. Last but not least, I'm nervous. My name is Tina Walker, T E E N A Walker. I was born and raised here in Klamath Falls. Been a native here all my life. Seen a lot come and go. Um, I don't know if this has been brought up, but I have a son, and he's the fifth generation mill worker at Collins Products. The pipeline will go about a hundred yards away from the mill, and I don't know if anyone's aware that the mill combusts. And DEQ has sanctions and different things in order, but just, just like anything else, you know, you get the heat, you get the pressure, you get build-up. What happens when that erupts? What happens to my son? You know, he's young. He's just starting out. He's my only son, who's gonna carry on my legacy, my generation, for my future. What happens can, you know... Your children can't be replaced. I'm sorry to say that, but they can't. I'm a grandma now. It's crazy, but it's beautiful. And I'm looking out for our future. I'm not looking out for a quick paycheck, a quick, you know, temporary job. I'm looking for our future. And I hope everybody considers that and looks deep into themselves and consider what it's gonna do for our future. What's it gonna do for my son? Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna accept that testimony or those clapping hands as thank you for a really good hearing tonight. So um, I want to... The hearing is coming to a close. I wanna thank everyone who submitted testimony, who came up here from the nine-year-old to the ninety-three-year-old. Uh, it was an awesome day, and I appreciate all the comments. Every comment that was made tonight has been notated, and it will help inform our identification of issues the applicant will be asked to address as well as permit decisions for the project. If you have additional comments, please submit them in writing via email, mail, or fax as detailed on those yellow comment sheets. The comment deadline is February three, twenty nineteen at five P M. If we get your comments at five oh one P M, I'm sorry. We won't accept it. So please get your comments in. Uh, any of you who are tracking this know that tomorrow, we will be in Central Point at the Jackson County Fairgrounds for another hearing at the same time. The public comment period hearing for this hearing is now closed. Thank you. Have a safe and pleasant drive home. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate your appearance. P M. If we get your comments at five oh one P M, I'm sorry. We won't accept it. So please get your comments in. Uh, any of you who are tracking this know that tomorrow, we will be in Central Point at the Jackson County Fairgrounds for another hearing at the same time. The public comment period hearing for this hearing is now closed. Thank you. Have a safe and pleasant drive home.